I'd like to call the Penn Tuckett Regional School Committee meeting, the high grade 25th to 20th. Roll call, Mayne Adams.
I am.
Joanna Blanchard. And then Bill Durel.
Here.
Emily Duarte.
Here.
Reece Frazani.
Here.
Dick Hodges.
Here.
Mr. Alcanti here.
Chris Reddick.
Here.
And it's all right.
Here.
We all rise to say that we're going to. The next item on the agenda is minutes. So I move the motion to accept the business committee minutes for the year 2020.
So moved.
Any discussion?
First, I question why under the budget we're discussing and approving it, I also have a question that we were approving of.
You don't have to approve the night. The night is about our bottom line number, maybe. What do you want to do? So I'm not sure how you want to treat the guidance, how you want to go forward with the actual life itself. But the people who are in the place, we don't want to be in a critical way. But we have to.
This is where we got us.
Order, how you want to guide yourself, what you want to go with within, or if you want to find a path, whether it be inside the actual.
I don't know Ben.
Please, can you make this discussion?
I guess when I first looked at you, you said that I was surprised at you.
Yeah, I'd like to make a mention that the fiscal year 21 budget is just a discussion process. Second. And then the next one. Okay, right, discussion. The next item on the agenda is minutes. So I move the motion to accept the business committee minutes for the year 2020.
So moved.
Any discussion? And I please have a motion to accept the minutes from the business committee, remember I did. You want the 2020?
Second.
Any discussion? And then subcommittee updates. So teaching, where do you come in?
Um, we've had a kind of a meeting scheduled, but I guess we're there.
Do we have a policy?
Um, yes, we have this morning, um, this morning, myself, Professor, and for the, um, Chris Reed.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment. And I just want to go over, um, policy on public comment to everybody. Public comment shall be prepared in 15 minutes and shall generally follow the opening of the meeting. The committee reserves the right to rearrange its agenda to accommodate scheduled presenters. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no more than three minutes. The chair may permit extension to this time limit. No citizen may speak more than once without permission of the chair. All citizens shall speak to the full committee through the chair and shall not address individual members or administrators. Targets for comment may include, but are not necessarily limited to those listed on the school committee agenda for that evening. It shall be in order, shall be in order for any committee member to direct questions to the speaker through the chair in order to clarify comments of the speaker. A group of citizens appearing at a meeting to express favor or opposition to a particular agenda item should designate one member of the group as spokesperson to be heard on the topic. Other members of the group may be heard if they feel they can contribute additional information regarding the topic. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the committee. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on the issues of school committee business. The committee and/or administrators may not be prepared to directly respond to citizens' questions posed in this forum, but the chair may request that citizens put the question in writing to the appropriate person or body so that the matter is given the proper consideration. Speakers may offer such objective criticisms of the school's operation and programs as concerned, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel nor any member of the school community. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. Citizens may also be heard on specific issues at other points on the agenda with the approval of the chair. Improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are not, are always out of order. If the speaker persists in improper conduct or remark, the chair may terminate that individual's privilege of address. So, um, we have a large group here, we'll get 15 minutes and permit.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. My name is Michael Went, President of the Association, Penn Tuckett Association of Teachers. I'm also a Merrimack resident on 117 River Road in Merrimack. Let me start by saying that the Penn Tuckett Association of Teachers appreciates and respects the administration and the school committee's willingness to engage in collaborative contract negotiations with us. Unfortunately, we are still dealing with many of the same issues we were dealing with 15 years ago. Just ask some of our retirees that have joined us in the crowd tonight. The budget and the funding for our district is not acceptable in order to provide our students the education they deserve. We understand that the state isn't providing us with enough funds. There are efforts underway to correct this. Other so-called rich districts, which basically is every other district on the North Shore, are facing similar issues, but many of them are picking up the slack from the state. I've seen the numbers. We don't have the time to go into detail tonight, but I'd be happy to share details with anybody in the community that is interested. For many years now, in addition to the impact on our students, the faculty have made sacrifices to help make ends meet. This has resulted in increasing class sizes and caseloads as teaching positions are not replaced. We have already passed the point of diminishing returns. As class sizes, additional classes, and caseloads increase, teachers are hard-pressed to develop meaningful nurturing relationships with their students based upon the daily demands placed upon them. Instead, our jobs become transactional, in many cases even reactionary. For those of us who have had the good fortune of attending Penn Tuckett, we know that this is not what a Penn Tuckett education is all about. A $1 million gap exists to correct step and call a misalignment of teachers over the past six years. Over 100 teachers are impacted by this misalignment. This has impacted the career earnings of teachers over those past six years, and this will also impact pensionable earnings for many teachers. We believe all parties involved in negotiations agree on the validity of the issue. However, currently, district administration is stating there is not enough money in the budget to align to fair market value. So do we deal with this and the other issues for another 15 years while our students suffer the consequences? This segment from a recent article sums it up well, and the author chose to say "the next generation?" Question mark. The stresses of teaching are far higher than they were a generation ago, and they are taking a toll on young educators and old. We are seeing fewer young people go into education. The author's son wanted to follow his parents' footsteps and pursue a career in education, completed his degree, found a job in a neighboring town, did so well that the superintendent actually called the fellow teacher to tell him about his son's excellent work. But after only three months, the son called his father to say, "I can't do this for the rest of my life. I'm already burned out." If we don't do something as a nation to promote our profession, increase pay, and fund our schools, we run the risk of intellectual, political, and economic collapse, the erosion of the educational foundation. All communities, when educators make a professional wage, especially small towns, where the school districts are often the largest employer, these folks raise their families here, shop in the local stores, and are an integral part of the culture and well-being of every community. How they see themselves in their profession becomes a big part of the success and vibrancy of the town and the community. We can't afford to wait another 15 years. The time is now. Thank you.
So anybody else that would like to get up to speak?
Hi, my name is Ashlyn McLaughlin. I live on 104 School Street in Groveland. I was just coming to comment on the decision of full day, uh, free full-day kindergarten. And just based on the statistics out there, which I know you all know, um, out of the 317 districts in Massachusetts, 262 do offer a full, um, free-day kindergarten. Also, just, it would be nice for our children to excel further with reading and math, based on what I've read, for kids that attend full-day versus the half-day program. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to get up to speak? Okay, well, thank you all, everybody for coming out. Shout support. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent and then the student representatives.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. At this time, we missed Mr. Bolio at the last meeting, so I know he has quite a bit to catch us up on, so I turn it over to our student news.
Thank you, Dr. B. The girls' basketball team will be competing in the Division II quarterfinal game. This is versus Tewksbury. It's eight o'clock on Thursday, and Coach McNamara also achieved his 300th win this month. The Penn Tuckett girls' four-by-two indoor track relay team broke the school record they previously held with a time of 1 minute 45 seconds, 45.26 seconds. They lowered the previous time they held, like I said, by one full second nearly, and it consists of Sabrina Campbell, Emily Rubio, Sage Smith, and Sierra Campbell. Course registration for next year has started this week, and students met yesterday on how to sign up for next year's electives online. And junior wrestler Nick Williamson won the state wrestling semifinals to move on to the state finals in the coming weeks. And there's a social media impact on mental health meeting tomorrow in the middle school auditorium. That's from seven to eight thirty. It's like rescheduled.
Rescheduled. I got you.
Thank you, I got it.
And that is all I have. I did not get the.
So just a couple of points on Ben's notes. Ben, also, I see the big signs up for the Wiz.
Yes.
What's that all about?
There's a play coming for the Wiz. It's a spring musical. It's coming up in March, and the dates will be announced the next minute.
Just a couple of comments to get to social media, how it's impacting mental health. That was on the agenda for tomorrow at seven o'clock over at the middle school. That speaker had to get re, uh, was, was not available, so we're postponing that until we can get that speaker back. I think that's a topic we all would very much like to hear about. Also, Ben mentioned the scheduling. We are, this year, doing online scheduling for the first time, and it, uh, so I went on and experienced that yesterday, last night as a parent. It was awesome, so to everybody who helped out with that, thank you very much. It was huge. So we'll see how that goes, but it's a whole new process. It restricts, so if I'm a, if I'm a freshman, I can't take courses unless I've fulfilled the prerequisites, and teachers are able to go and fill in courses. So your, set my science, social studies, math, and English, that's pre-filled in, so you don't have to go through stuff like that, but hoping that is, uh, easy for students, parents, and hopefully, uh, for the scheduling process. That's all I have for.
Well, thank you. Okay, um, so the next item we have on the agenda is executive session. We will be coming back afterwards, and we're entering into executive session to discuss your strategy with respect to whether for bargaining or litigation, if no meeting, they have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair's headquarters. We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Have a leg?
Yeah.
She feels good being in the pool.
Yes, of course.
So what were you doing in Italy? What? Doesn't suck, does it?
Yeah.
We have to go away. We have to go away. She schedules up for like Key West like the last time she was in the lodge or something, just to get down there. Does she know?
The cold feels good.
I would have been on the committee, please aside last year. Every year, experience, every step.
Okay, um, so the next item on the agenda is section 19 for section approval. Section 19 involves ethics disclosure by the superintendent. So can I please have a motion?
I'd like to move approval of section 19.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? No? Extentions? Next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 21 calendar. Survey went out to all the families regarding option A and different variables for the fiscal year 21 calendar.
Sure. We took some feedback from the school committee, uh, last meeting, and we brought forward to tonight a proposal for a calendar. I can give you some updates on the survey data that came back from the parents. We had a really robust response, uh, with over 700 responses. Yep, it's excellent. And all of the responses from the parents are reflected in what is the proposed calendar. Uh, and just as a point of reference, so the four questions that were posed to parents were the start date, number one, um, what were people's feelings on the start date, and overwhelming majority of folks, uh, thought that the 8:31 start date, that Monday, was the best way to go, uh, which would leave the teachers starting the few days prior to. Early release days was a question, uh, excuse me, uh, the, the winter vacation in December was a question. We had an opportunity potentially to do two full weeks or do a week and a half, having an early release day on the 23rd of December. Eighty percent of respondents said that the early release day on the 23rd was their preferred day, because that gives us three more days off of the end of the year when we do it that way. Early release days, and we had some dialogue with the committee about early release days in particular, and we were very curious as to the convenience or inconvenience of those to families. Eighty-four percent of parents responded that Friday early release days before long weekends was their preferred location for early release days. So not on middle of the week, not on Fridays that were not early release days, but backed up to long weekends is what their preference is. And where we placed additional full-day PD days, 77% of parents prefer that they be on Fridays or Mondays, either before or after a vacation week. So the proposed calendar tonight is there. The middle, the language in the middle would be updated with just more actual information, but the calendar as its structure is set up and proposed to the way it is. Yes, so even prior to this, PAT gave us their input from informal survey of staff, uh, and we took that into consideration.
So we need to go on the calendar?
I make a motion to approve the calendar, option A for calendar year two, 2020 to 2021?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing fiscal year 21 budget.
That's what you're going to do, a little chuckle, you think? So he's going to start.
Oh. The lead's going to give up the next question.
So overall, with this, whatever this starts, I'll just walk through if this doesn't fire up for me, uh, but what I wanted to do was just go ahead and get a overview of where we've been. We've all now started together. And so I broke this down, it's the steps. Bray and I talked about this, went over this, just so everyone understood where we're at, what we're going to do. So really, overall, six steps. There's some small steps in here. Step one, build initiatives. Um, step two, the feedback, we have feedback initiatives. Step three, we're still waiting for GIC, the Destiny Help outside budget impact. Step four, we've meeting, well, we've met with the finance directors, just to find out where they were, and their assessments, what they could afford, what they could not afford. Um, step five, we're not at, the school committee was a budget number. Step six, PRS makes adjustments based on what happened. So step one, the initiatives, we did that late November, early December, and those were, we brought three forward. One was the free for the kindergarten. A second was the one for laptops for grade seven to 12, a cost of $26,000, and about $48,000 thereafter, and then all the tech dollars, it's got a cost, but about that. And then the third one was eliminating all student fees for extracurricular activities. We know we are currently do that for, um, clubs and cards, but we don't do that for athletics, hope to get rid of all of them. Feedback on December 17, the one initiative, we projected, that was eliminating all student fees, so that one came up. So into the budget, we added the other two, the cost of full-day kindergarten, which is one time, and again, 200 students is about an estimate for kindergartens right now. We get reimbursed about one, or we reimburse the 100. So this is a cost that we knew was going to come sooner or later. So those were the two. The outside impact of the governor's budget, the GIC cost, the ERS cost.
Esoteric.
What's that?
Esoteric, yeah.
Esoteric, yeah, esoteric costs, and, and all those other factors we've been waiting for to come in, and we still don't have GIC. So, meeting with finance directors, one of the very fortunate parts we have is we have good relationships with all three towns. In my talks with the finance directors and even with, uh, some of you, that relationship is not always better with the towns. So being able to have those good relationships is very beneficial, um, because they understand what we're trying to get to, as a school district, and we understand what their struggles and strengths may be. So Bray sat down, met with the two finance directors, one business manager, and they looked at their numbers. It's interesting, we do look at those, and Bray can throw us into a model and see, even if a town like West Newbury with the two-step method has to pay very little increase relative to Groveland in America, and if West Newbury wanted to give more, they would throw the other two towns into an override. So they let us know what they think and what they can afford, and as you know, they're up there, tend to be very upfront, honest with us. So, step six, we're fast forward to step seven. Step seven, so the town meeting and the budget line cuts. So if there's an override, if tonight you say, hey, we want to do some override, then at that point, um, we need to wait for results in the town meeting before we do it. If this vote is not to go, then we go ahead and we're going to have to go to that older budget number, and that's what we have to go and start making line by, line by line, just figuring out how do we get to that, um, budget number without any of the overrides. So one of the things we talked about was special education. This is just a refresh as to what we've been doing. So 75%, that's the Student Opportunity Act. That's what the budget, that's the circuit breaker number that's supposed to come back in. So is that a safe assumption? The answer is no. It's not a safe assumption. They've hit, they've hit the circuit breaker number once, I believe, in the last 12 years they hit that circuit breaker. Sometimes it's not, some you might, you might hit upper 60s, you might hit 70, um, but it has not gone to 75. So SOA is supposed to take that. This was a big one for us. The 25% out of, for out-of-district special education transportation. So that is also supposed to be part of the Student Opportunity Act. These are the two things that would potentially impact us. But that is a safe assumption. The wording is specifically in there subject to appropriation, and in addition to that, the trouble with this is that they've already said they're going to fulfill circuit breaker first, and if there was leftover, they will apply to here. So if they're going to fill circuit breaker once in the last 12 years, 15 years, it's, I don't know how positive I feel about them being able to meet this, but if they did, it would be a big difference. So just an example of a cost. So we have, we just said, we had a student that went to one of our collabs. Our collabs cost about $70,000 per student, and that's just the tuition cost. Then there's transportation, and $40,000 is about an assumption for one student to go back and forth for a year to one of our collabs. And this instance, we're ignoring the fact that in the collabs, we typically share, but so the tuition breakdown on the right-hand side, so you have $70,000 per cost. We have to pay a base cost for every student, and that's about $46,000. We have to pay that upfront, or we actually pay the full $70,000 upfront. So we pay $46,000, and the circuit breaker will reimburse us the following year for the remaining, the $24,000. So we get back $15,600 from that. So the total cost to us, and first was the year $70,000, and the next fiscal year is $54,400. That bottom number right there, that's our per pupil expenditure, and that's if you take out the out-of-district, um, special education, and if you take out, uh, the new seven-to-12 bills. So essentially, you're paying, we're paying about five, uh, three times the cost of a student that's in district, or we're paying for out-of-district. So transportation gains, the 25%, and again, we use the $40,000. One of the, uh, one of the things to write down there is obviously the Commonwealth does reimburse for 2021, that increases each year, so the idea is they'll reimburse 21%, uh, 25% in the first year, and then 50%, then 75, and then 100%. So by the time they get to, um, the fiscal year 25, it's supposed to be covered fully. You got to do the circuit breaker first. It is $1.5 billion for seven years, and again, everyone here has heard you say this, it's $1.5 billion of which we got $30 per student, which is the health and harmless. And last night's presentation, Bray and I presented at Merrimack's FinCon, Winnie here presented for us, we got a total of just over, uh, around $68,000. Winnie here got $1.1 billion. They have an increase of 7%, okay, 7% of the budget, our increase of 3%. So for transportation, our cost is $40,000. That's what we're going to get, we have to pay that upfront. This fiscal year, we have to pay a full $40,000. If they do the full reimbursement, we would get, we have to pay $30,000 extra. Our overall, we're about a million in out-of-district special education costs, so if they did fully, it has to be $40,000 in cost and impact. So this is real, very real. We, when we got the budget binder, we had about $700,000 in additional cost to special education. It was last Monday or Tuesday when I came back, I had, I got rushed in to meet with Dr. Jarvis, he needed five minutes to talk to me about two situations, um, and that will cost us, those two situations will cost us an additional $200,000. I have meetings on my calendar to meet individually with both Senator Zabaleo and Senator Tar. This is something that's not new that they've heard from all the superintendents, but it's just me getting it there face time and time again, and this is going to do some severe damage to us for all of our towns.
So we need to vote on the calendar?
I make a motion to approve the calendar, option A for calendar year two, 2020 to 2021.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? The next item on the agenda is the public hearing fiscal year 2021 budget.
That's what you're gonna do, a little chuckle. So he's gonna start.
So overall, with this, whatever this starts, I'll just walk through if this doesn't fire up for me. But what I wanted to do was just go ahead and get a overview of where we've been. We've all now started together. And so I broke this down into steps. Bray and I talked about this, went over this, just so everyone understood where we were. So really, overall, six steps. There's some small steps in here. Step one, we'll get initiatives. Step two, the feedback, we have feedback initiatives. Step three, we're still waiting for GIC, the Destiny Help outside budget impact. Step four, we've meeting, well, we met with the finance directors, just to find out where they were, what they could afford, what they could not afford. Step five, we're not at, school committee was a budget number. Step six, PRS makes adjustments based on what happened in step five. So step one, the initiatives, we did that late November or December. And those were, we brought three forward. One was the free for the kindergarten. A second was the one for laptops for grade seven, twelve, one time cost $26,000. And about $48,000 thereafter, and then all the tech dollars, it's got a cost, but about that. And then the third one was eliminating all student fees for extra breaker activities. We know we are currently do that for clubs and arts, but we don't do that for athletics. We'll get rid of all of them. The feedback on December 17th, the one initiative, we projected, there was a million on student fees, so that one came up. So into the budget, we added the other two. The cost of full day kindergarten, which is one time, and again, 200 students is about an estimate for kindergartens. Right now, we get reimbursed above one, or we reimburse the 100. So this is a cost that we knew was going to come sooner or later. So those were the two. The outside impacting of governor's budget, the GIC cost, the ERS cost.
Essex regional.
What's that?
Essex regional.
Essex regional costs. And all those other factors we've been waiting for has come in, and we still don't have GIC. So meeting with finance directors, one of the very fortunate parts we have is we have good relationships with all three towns. In my talks with the finance directors and even with some of you, that relationship is not always better with the towns. So being able to have those good relationships is very beneficial. Because they understand what we're trying to get to, as a school district. And we understand what their struggles and strengths may be. So Bray sat down, met with the two finance directors, one business manager, and they looked at their numbers. It's interesting, we do look at those and Bray can throw us into a model and see, even if a town like West Newbury with the two-step method has to pay very little increase relative to Groveland in America. And if West Newbury wanted to give more, they would throw the other two towns into an override. So they let us know what they think and what they can afford, and as you know, they're up there, tend to be very upfront, honest with us. So step six is what this, we're fast forward to step seven. Step seven, so the town meeting and the budget line cuts. So if there's an override, if tonight you say, hey, we want to do an override, then at that point, we need to wait for results in town meeting before we do it. If this vote is not to go, then we go ahead and we're gonna have to go to that whole budget number. And that's what we have to go and start making line by line, just figuring out how do we get to that budget number without any of the overrides. So one of the things we talked about was special education. This is just a refresh as to what we've been doing. So 75%, that's the Student Opportunity Act. That's what the budget, that's the circuit breaker number that's supposed to come back in. So is that a safe assumption? The answer is no. It's not a safe assumption. They've hit, they've hit the circuit breaker number once, I believe, in the last 12 years they hit that circuit breaker number. Sometimes it's not, something might, you might hit upper 60s, you might hit 70. But it has not gone to 75. So SOA is supposed to take that. This was a big one for us. The 25% out of, for out-of-district special education transportation. So that is also supposed to be part of the Student Opportunity Act. These are the two things that would potentially impact us. But that is a safe assumption. The wording is specifically in there, subject to appropriation. And in addition to that, the trouble with this is that they've already said they're going to fulfill circuit breaker first, and if there was leftover, they will apply to here. So if they're going to fill circuit breaker once in the last 12 years, 15 years, it's, I don't know how positive I feel about them being able to meet this. But if they did, it would be a big difference. So just an example of a cost. So we have, we had a student that went to one of our collabs. Our collabs cost about $70,000 per student. And that's just the tuition cost. Then there's transportation, and $40,000 is about an assumption for one student to go back and forth for a year to one of our collabs. And this instance, we're ignoring the fact that in the collabs, we typically share. But so the tuition breakdown on the right-hand side, so you have $70,000 per cost. We have to pay a base cost for every student. And that's about $46,000. We have to pay that upfront, or we actually pay the full $70,000 upfront. So we pay $46,000. And then circuit breaker will reimburse us the following year for the remaining, the $24,000. So we get back $15,600 from that. So the total cost to us, and first fiscal year is $70,000, and the next fiscal year is $54,400. That bottom number right there, that's our per pupil expenditure. And that's if you take out the out-of-district special education and if you take out the new seven, twelve bills. So essentially, you're paying, we're paying about three times the cost of a student that's in district than what we're paying for out-of-district. So transportation gains, the 25%. And again, we used the $40,000. One of the, one of the things right down there is obviously the Commonwealth does reimburse for 2021. That increases each year. So the idea is they'll reimburse 21%, uh, 25% in the first year, then 50%, then 75, and then 100%. So by the time they get to fiscal year 25, it's supposed to be covered fully. You guys do the circuit breaker first. It is $1.5 billion for seven years. Again, everyone here has heard you say this, this is $1.5 billion of which we got $30 per student who wished to help harmless. And last night's presentation, Bray and I presented to Merrimack's Fincom, Whittier presented for us. We got a total of just over, around $68,000. Whittier got $1.1 billion. They have an increase of 7%, okay, 7% of the budget, our increase is 3%. So for transportation, our cost is $40,000. That's what we're gonna get, we have to pay that upfront. This fiscal year, we have to pay a full $40,000 if they do the full reimbursement. We would get, have to pay $30,000 extra. Our overall, we're about a million in out-of-district special education costs. So if they did fully, it has to be 40,000 dollars in the taxes. So this is real, very real. We, when we got the budget binder, we had about $700,000 in additional cost to special education. It was last Monday or Tuesday when I came back, I had, I got rushed in to meet with Dr. Jarvis. He needed five minutes to talk to me about two situations. And that will cost us, those two situations will cost us an additional $200,000. I have meetings on my calendar to meet individually with both Senator Zabaleo and Senator Tar. This is something that's not new that they've heard from all the superintendents, but it's just me getting it their face time and time again. And this is going to do some severe damage to us for all of our towns. So that's where we are with the whole budget piece. Bray, you want to?
Well done.
So as we, as we sit here tonight, we have our budget book that we handed out at the end of January, through January. I've met with some committee members who've wanted to come by my office and ask questions and things like that. But before we get into some of the particulars of the options available to you tonight, does anybody have any questions about what you see in the budget book that you'd like to ask at a particular time? I know it's a format we've all seen five or six times since it was created because I know we like to keep a historical run that you can watch. So sometimes it's a little more than you need to see, a lot of zero accounts of things that once existed. But as it sits right now, the budget you see before you, based upon my meeting with the towns, and what the superintendent alluded to but didn't quite get into is also when the state budget comes out, that's when the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education creates the net minimum spending numbers, which is the first phase of what they famously call the two-step calculation. You wish you could always verify that number, but you'll never verify it because it's made up of all sorts of weird things like income from the towns, property values, you can look that stuff up, but I'm pretty sure they're not gonna give me a look at people's tax returns so I can verify their calculations. So you kind of just have to plug it in and begin. After you meet that number, you get to do it the way Masco does it, kind of the way we used to do it, which is a percentage of the student body above that. So Groveland's 35%, and they'll pay 35% of any cost above that net minimum spending, West Newbury 25%, Merrimack, whatever the percentage is. It's just, that's how it works. So what I presented in front of you was a couple of different assessment methodologies. You could do 100 of these things, but I figured I'd give you the three ideas of where you are, including in the backup, which would be the assessment sheets and the calculations that would go to the towns. The first, at the top of the first one, which is basically the assessment methodology, what would happen if we did the budget book as presented, which is $44,664,901. It's a little different than we've done in the past because included in this number this year is a great big number for a new school, which we all know is coming. So I kind of factored that out because that's not coming out of their money. They get to raise their taxes to cover that amount. So you'll see, if we did the budget as we do right now, the general fund increase to Groveland would be 492,263, Merrimack 575,79, and West Newbury 171,258. Guess who got the lowest number when net minimum spending came out for? Not, not hard to figure out. What you see is the middle one, which is the one I created after I met with, going through the towns. Basically, this is what they said they could go forward with without an override. Obviously, West Newbury does very well in this scenario because it's the least common denominator. Groveland's about what we expected to give in the budget book. Merrimack is significantly higher. Merrimack are only even able to accomplish that because they had a huge population drop in Whittier. So their Whittier bill's going down, so they're willing to transfer that money into us. So that's what we could do. It would require us to go into the budget book as presented to you in January and reduce our cost by $614,901. If that is the committee's wish to go in that particular direction going forward. We've all seen this movie before. I will sit down with the superintendent and if anybody else wants to come by, we'll begin to go through this thing. We'll make assumptions. We'll maybe roll the dice on a couple of things and come back to you with some sheet that you've seen before that changes everything by line, based upon the governor's budget coming in, a little more increase in transportation aid, not that much in chapter 70, this change of assessments to the towns, GIC cost estimate changes, Essex regional retirement changes, all the little things that'll factor in there. And then we'd ask you to give us your comments on what you're thinking of how that would look. Obviously, the superintendent works very carefully to make sure that elementary class sizes, especially in the early ones, aren't something that we look at. The last model is what we call the draconian model. This is the one where you go and you say, okay, we're going to ask for an override. And as the superintendent alluded to, one town has already said they won't support it at all. The other one just kind of assumes that because of how we've always worked in the past. But if you do ask them for an override, they get to pick the number. It's not, if you asked for $600,000 from Groveland, they're not gonna say 600 minus 258. They can put, as long as they give you a dollar more than last year, they can put 599,999 on. And to protect themselves, that's exactly what they'll tend to do, which makes it very hard to pass. Now, if you do that and it goes forward and two of the towns don't pass it, that means we have to act on what they did give us, and that would require us to cut $1,485,430 from the spending plan. So that's bad. And it's really bad. I mean, I, the thought of having to do it is almost unpalatable. I'm not even sure how it could be done to maintain any type of sense of organization to educate children. You could find some of it in little areas where we'll try to find the 614 and a few guesses and get it down. But staffing, and as the superintendent led to sped, has already put us in a position where we're down two custodians, two pares, one elementary school clerical position, and a central office position that we're not refilling as they've left because we're just trying to cover backup into sped. So I suppose at this time here, I kind of, we need to know, as the time runs short, because we have to get this to the towns by March 15th. Although, you know, if they needed a couple of days, I'm sure they might give them to you. But for the simple, we need to know which direction you want us to head in as our time is fairly short now.
The idea is you let us know which direction, which of these three you want us to move on, and then we'll make preparations based on what your directors.
Any comments? Anybody in thoughts, if it is? I know it's the decision we have to make every year and nobody likes it, but we have to make it.
I only thought as, I always like to hear your personal approach or your idea, what you think is best for the community, not only present, long-term. I didn't go to school as a business major, so I put a lot of faith in stock into the people that did. So I, I need to kind of hear from you gentlemen, what your preference is, what you think is best for the community, et cetera.
I don't like to give you a preference as much as just the basic information. Keep in mind that these same people, if you do go for an override, are about to get that, with an $800 bill on average for a new school that's about to hit. So that'll be in the back of their minds as you think about it. And as much as I hate to say it, that's option three, if it came to pass, is kind of like having a stove right in front of you with the gas on and you're touching it. It's dangerous. It's, it's not close to something we could really manage. I'm not sure even how we would do it without significant across the board in every type of facet, staff reductions, if it came to pass.
Does an override has to pass in all three towns?
No.
Two out of three.
I have a question for Bray. Just has a question?
I'm sorry.
So, I know that there's some things that are still TBA, like the GIC increase.
That's the last one.
Okay, so what percentage did you put in the budget for that?
I put in.
Percentage or dollar amount?
I put in five. I pray, I pray for zero, and God, I hope we get two and a half.
And how much is a 5%?
5% increase was for, for the retiree section. It was $69,676.10 for the regular employees. That increase is $157,172. So if we got 2.5%, that reduction would be about $112,000, $113,000.
And when do you expect to get those numbers?
I think their next hearing is tomorrow. Last, there's one the last week of February. And hopefully they'll, that's their, like, desk, they're like, public hearing and stuff like that. Normally, they would have leaked out stuff by now, but I haven't really seen anything. But they did come out with something earlier on, more that was, we're not doing any plan design change, we're not doing anything like that. So at least we know that we're going forward with the same plan, it's just a question of what the rate will be.
Okay. And the, what has the rate increases been prior to this year? Like, has, is 5% like a really high ceiling at this point, or?
5% would be.
It really could be 5%.
It could be. Since we've been in the GIC, we've seen as low as zero.
Okay.
And as high as, I think, 3.91 year. But usually it's in that 2%, I think it was 2% last year, roughly like that. Like, it might be off a little bit, but it hasn't been very, it hasn't been the raises you would see in the towns who have the plans we used to have. They were, they're much more significant in the 10% range, so.
So if you were to get a decrease in that estimate, would you, would you, as the business manager or the administration, recommend increasing it above the $44,050,000?
No, no, I would use it to cut down, I would use it to cut into the deficit of 619 we've already got. Yeah. Anything I find now, I have to cover that first.
I know, but if we, the deficit is the 614, right?
Right.
Which is part of a $44 million budget.
Yep.
So the deficit would be less.
Yeah, but I couldn't.
But we still would have, so I guess then would we?
If you increase the budget and use this money to, to use that, the deficit wouldn't change. I'd still have to go to other areas to come up with the $600,000. Some things have already occurred. You know, we know we got not as much chapter 70 as I thought in the budget book. I suppose I could hit that a little bit right now quickly. We got a lot of money in regional transportation. We picked up $104,000. That's due to the superintendent nagging, him and his buddies nagging to get that, so that worked really well. We are, however, they turned right around and increased our school choice expense from the budget by $13,000 and our charter school expense by $64,000, so they pretty much found a way to take that right back from you. We know now the Essex Regional Retirement is gonna go down from the budget book, $5,126. And those are, those are the only, like, known things that have happened, that you can hang your hat on. How the town assessments change will depend on what you decide to go forward with. And then, once we have all that and plug all these things into the model, I said we go back to seeing what I do or don't have to do to meet your recommendation tonight. Whether it's cut 614, don't do anything and go forward with an override. Those are basically your decisions where we are now. Knowing that if you go forward with an override, it could be as simple as, yes, it passes and we don't have to cut anything. Or if it doesn't pass and we're not looking at 614 anymore, we could be looking at $1,485,000. I know it's a lot to grasp all at once. I know there's, there are so many moving parts. And I kind of thank God I've been doing this for so long because I can understand how tough it is for me to grasp.
There's a phrase that timing is everything. And if we weren't building a new school, I think people might see the third option here on the override as an option. I haven't talked to everyone in Groveland, but I haven't talked to one single person in Groveland that is willing to be paying significant amounts of money of increased tax dollars on a new school. And that took some real talking to, to turn people around and realize this is something we really need. It's not something we just want. It's something we need. But to be throwing an override in there, I think that's our greatest challenge. And I would have a very difficult time supporting option three on this sheet of paper. That's my comment. Timing is everything, and this is the wrong time for an override.
Is option three if it fails?
Yeah.
It's option one that you don't want?
Option, option one would be.
The override.
The override.
Oh, I'm sorry, I've.
Option, option three is what happens if the override fails.
I used to be dyslexic. I'm KO now.
So you said that we need to get our decision back to the towns by March 15th?
Well, no, we need to get them the budget book. Because, so in other words, we need to go over another, once you make your decision tonight, if it's option, the middle option, we have to come back to you with our recommendations to cut that amount of money, so. And then, then we would have a budget number that we could go forward, approved budget with approved lines that we can give to the towns if they can enter into their town meeting warrants.
So essentially, we voted earlier tonight to get the approval of item D fiscal year 20 budget. Yeah, John, but we need to make a decision tonight.
Well, no, just to make a decision on what you want us to go forward and do. Now, the actual budget, again, will come forward with changes to the budget book. So you'll see line item changes and you'll get to debate those and say, you know what, I don't like taking out whatever was this number here. I'd rather you do this. And that's when you actually vote the budget itself.
Essentially, we've been doing, still being too many evaluating here, looking at all these options and how can you bring it down? And we'll break, either the options that we see least impactful.
So how do we reach a decision if we decide not to vote?
Well, you're not voting, but you have to kind of tell us which way you want us to go so we can begin to get to, give you that budget book changes.
Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
Just to be clear, option two is what, you already talked to the towns and they, this is what?
If you go to option two.
Yeah.
And say that we don't, we want to use option two, we will go back and create a budget of $44,500,000. And we, to do that, we have to find $614,901 in reductions in this budget book. We will present those to you, and then you can either approve them, not approve them and change them, that that's where you get to the final budget, how you create those lines.
No, I understand that. But you said you spoke to the towns and they said this is what they would be willing to give?
This, this is what they can give.
What they can give.
So, right, so be willing to, because when you look at West Newbury on that at $7,054, if West Newbury increases that number, it's not an equal. If they increased it by $1,000, Groveland, Merrimack don't increase by $1,000. They, so it increases exponentially.
For example, for example, if you look at, just to get an idea, again, they see our budget book, they see our numbers, everything like that, and they show me all their numbers too. Merrimack's fiscal year 20 levy increase is $412,000. They're willing to give us $358,000 of it. So, I mean, they're, it's not like they're holding back on us. Groveland's, Groveland's is a little more, but, and they could do a little more, kind of like West Newbury could, but Merrimack's kind of at their limit, and you'd drive them into that area, so. And also Groveland got, where Merrimack got money that they could transfer to help pay towards that from Whittier. Groveland got hit.
Yep.
Have to pay more to Whittier. And Whittier is not something you can kind of play around with because the way their methodology works is half the towns' assessments go down every year and half of them go up, and all they need is half. The way it works with the net minimum spending, it seems to work with them. So they're always gonna get their budget, no matter what. Plus, they get 1.1 million.
So you want us to take a vote on each one, or?
If someone makes a motion for which one you'd like us to do.
The will of the committee more than a vote.
Yeah, if you, someone could just kind of give me, give us a.
Somebody gonna make a suggestion?
I mean, given that, with the new overrides already going in place for the schools, I don't think there's gonna be an appetite for an override for addition, for an additional increase in the budget. So I'm most comfortable with option two. I do think in the future, we're gonna start to have to look at asking the towns for an override because we cannot keep absorbing these sped increases into the rest of the budget. We just can't keep taking money away from the general population. I'm hoping as we get the new school building, and people get more excited about, you know, this new building, they're gonna be more willing to put more money towards it, but I'm not so sure that that's gonna be this year. And I would be really concerned about, and, and I think there's a real chance. And I would be really concerned about, and, and I think there's a real chance we'd end up at this one point four million dollar deficit if we went for the override, so I'm most comfortable with number two this year.
Anybody else?
There, the one, I hope the expression gorilla in the room is not inappropriate, but the one thing that hasn't come up in public session are the teacher salaries, the contract, and what influence will that have on a potential override. I mean, I'm very comfortable with number two, but since we don't know at this point, and it would be inappropriate, I don't know, to bring up teacher contract talks in public, what, what is the impact of that on, on these numbers? Because I think that has to be looked at.
Early on, the, but, we've done this in several different ways, I usually defer to however the superintendent would like it presented. I think the last time we threw a line in just called salary adjustments in the budget, where the school committee has lately liked to track things on the thing, what we did is we just assumed a two and a half percent increase across the board, and actually used that in the line items that we see in the budget for like history teachers, math teachers, things like that.
Got it, okay.
So it is, that, that.
Factored in.
That number is reflected in, it's about four hundred and fifty thousand, is already reflected into this budget.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? So I think the consensus, because nobody else has spoken, has been option two.
So unless I'm hearing anything wrong, for our next meeting, superintendent and I will sit down and talk to everybody we can talk to, and figure out how we can come up with the least impactful way to remove six hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and one dollars from the budget book, as presented to you in January. Just wanna make sure I'm hearing, if that's what I'm hearing? So that, that will be available to us at our next meeting, that, those recommendations.
Thank you.
Again, please review your budget books, if you find something in there you want to talk about, because just because we gave you those numbers, don't, don't, if it comes that you may want to change them.
So the last, the agenda is the donation from the Bagnell PTA. So the Bagnell PTA would like to make a donation, and, and twenty thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. The intention of the donation is for the purchase of meat and protein burgers at the Bagnell spring.
Move to accept the donation from Bagnell PTA of twenty thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars.
Discussion, do you? And the last item on the agenda is public comment. Again, one minute, three minutes.
Hi, I'm Elaine Muse, I'm from Groveland, I'm up, well, both my girls are, have graduated now, but I live in Groveland, I'm a teacher at the Bagnell. So my question was, and this is a question, about Whittier. So my question is, and I know it's a very good program, and it's a wonderful option, is there a limit to the number of students that a town can send to Whittier? Like, is there a cap? Or is it based on whatever number of students want to go to Whittier, and who they will accept? Because I'm hearing, and I think I knew it as a parent when my kids were growing up, that, you know, they seem to get a significant amount of funds. So I'm just wondering, in terms of that cost, is there a way that, that could be looked at, or negotiated? I mean, am I clear?
I hear you. To your, to your first question, Whittier sets a number for the school, how many students they're going to have, but not by town.
So they have, they have a number of applicants, so they know, I think it was three hundred and, I think, three hundred and fifty is the number of slots they have available. Students from all their districts can apply, and they don't necessarily look at the towns, the students. I actually, if after this, I have in my car, a thing I can give you just on Whittier's.
I just wondered if there was some way that there could be some cost-saving measure or a cap in, in that expenditure? So we have to guarantee a certain number of students that we're gonna send there?
No.
So we could send less? Or we could send more?
Yes, actually, we have been sending less, in the most recent few years than we used to.
No, I think the question is, can the towns say, we will send no more than ten students to Whittier, or something? Is that your question?
I guess I'm wondering, I, I mean, certainly if I had a kid that wanted to go there, I wouldn't want you to tell me no, so don't get me, it's just a question. So, so we do not put a cap on?
There's no cap on there, it's just, anybody can apply, and there's an application process, and whoever gets in, that's, and once the limit of seats have been filled, that's it, but it's no limit for a town.
Okay, but we never limit the number of kids that can apply?
We're not allowed to, no.
So that's part of that regional agreement?
No, it's part of, in Massachusetts law works, the kids are allowed to try to go to a vocational school if you want.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Is there anybody else, or would you open the screen? Okay, so can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.